Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight in your presence to conduct the city's business and we just ask your special blessings on all of those in our community during this holiday season. We ask that you just build a hedge of protection around our officers and our firefighters, our, all of our first responders, Lord, and that you be with us tonight and guide us, give us wisdom as we go about your, the business of conducting the city operations, Lord. In Jesus' sweet, holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Call to order, City Council Meeting, November 20th, 2025. Um, Amy, will you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in liberty and justice for all.
All right, going with the abridged version now.
All right, okay. Ms. Vicki, when you're ready.
J.K. Hodges. Louis Short.
Here.
Lane Tubbs.
Here.
Pete Harris.
Here.
Chris Foster.
Here.
Ally Sugg. Andy Baker.
Here.
Andy Ecklin.
Here.
Attorney Prince.
Here.
Mayor Griffin.
Here.
Members of the press.
Let the record show, we have a quorum. First, I need a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve them as presented plus excerpts as of October 21st, 2025, City Council Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki?
Andy Baker, yes. Andy Ecklin.
Yes.
Chris Foster.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Pete Harris.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yeah.
Motion carried. Next, approval of payments journals dated October 1st to October 31st, 2025.
Make a motion, we approve the payment journals?
Second.
Any discussion? Lane.
Lane.
You ready?
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Chris Foster.
Yes.
Pete Harris.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yeah.
Motion carried. Next, approval of street fund financial statements, sanitation fund, general fund, community center and OEM, O-N-M, and miscellaneous funds dated October 31st, 2025.
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki?
Andy Ecklin.
Yes.
Chris Foster.
Yes.
Andy Baker, yes. Pete Harris.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
J.K.
Hodges.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yeah.
Motion carried. Next, approval of street fund financial statements, sanitation fund, general fund, community center and OEM, O-N-M, and miscellaneous funds dated October 31st, 2025.
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki?
Andy Ecklin.
Yes.
Chris Foster.
Yes.
Andy Baker, yes. Pete Harris.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
J.K.
Hodges.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yeah.
Motion carried. Next, you have your supervisors' reports. Anybody have any questions for our supervisors? Uh, Chief Hale?
I just wanted to introduce the council to our three village members of the police department. Uh, Officer Tanner Weckler, who just graduated the academy last week, and Officer Kagan Baker, Officer Chuck Brown, who is already so lucky, but uh, is out of town. So, uh, they will be the first two going to the 14th grade academy on the beginning of January, so they'll be kind of, just wanted the council to make the news, so there you go.
Thank you, guys. Okay, we can start with our unfinished business, um, our off-duty, uh, police department policy, secondary employment. You guys see the policy? The vehicle usage agreement?
I mean, the purpose was just to get something in writing, and Brian's good with it, and you're good with it. I'm good with it.
I'll ask for a motion to approve the vehicle usage agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Vicki, when you're ready.
Chris Foster.
Yes.
Pete Harris.
Yes.
J.K.
Hodges.
Yes.
Andy Ecklin.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yeah.
Andy Baker, yes. Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Motion carried.
I was gonna say, just on an aside to that, I don't know how many of them are gonna be close enough, but one of their guys told me that they're putting in 36 new, Flywheel's putting in, supposed to be putting in 36 new well sites, but that's like statewide, not just round.
Okay. Really scared me for a second.
But they hadn't done any other than the Holmes one in.
Recently?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did have a question. I know it's a little long.
That's a question.
If the shift is shorter than eight hours, is there a plan for that, or are there shifts that are shorter, or is that just gonna be like the base?
That's gonna be the base. I mean, I, I would look at it on a case-by-case basis, on a list, uh, if it might reach an eight-hour or, or a four-hour, something like that, we're probably just gonna do it anyway, but, especially with the public stuff, but we know that like Flywheel is probably 12-hour shifts, but then, or what council asks that we address, uh, costs about $1.86 per hour, by roughly estimating on fuel, how much we've been up, so, um, just trying to get it ballpark.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, um, Josh, do you have an update on the, um, metal structures to replace the shades?
I contacted Sean the next day.
Uh-huh. Yeah, you can come up here.
Uh, I contacted Sean the next day. The guy went back and forth there for a little bit. It has to be a commercial, obviously installer, uh, and so he's getting me a list. He said he would email me a list.
Okay.
Uh, as soon as he does. I did a lot of homework also the last two days on the Learns Act, if y'all wanna hear about that at all.
Go ahead.
Uh, so only 11 current participants in our program use that, uh, so we're gonna have a big thanks, I'm sorry, big Christmas recess program here pretty soon, like, uh, and what we're gonna do is really educate the parents, we're gonna have the 11 parents, I actually spoke with two of them today, we should be getting, hopefully, we kind of all agree to, we think a thousand dollars is a fair price, so they're gonna pay a thousand dollars, 250 dollars per quarter for the recess program, so currently we have 52, so that should be about 52,000 dollars, so, uh, there's all kinds of stipulations in it and things like that, they can only give us so much, uh, but I think that's kind of a fair price, and we don't wanna take everything they have, because they can also use that money for like sports programs and things like that as well, so, uh, but that should significantly increase financially at least with, uh...
It's more than five dollars, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's great.
Do the math on that one.
At lea-, at least the two parents that we spoke with today who kinda brad trust, we kinda had that conversation, they felt that was a fair deal. I mean, it's free money to them and it's not, they don't actually get the money at any, at any time, uh, so they, they'll just have to select it and they will have to go through, working with Kerry, and we'll have to have an account, a different account set up more than likely for that in order to, for it to work that way.
Okay.
But, uh, we're hoping, the next check I believe is distributed January 23rd, if I'm remembering correctly, and we should be able to get the first 250 dollars then, and then we'll just continue that throughout the course.
Thank you, that's great.
And then as soon as, obviously, I hear back from Sean about the installers.
That's fine, when we get some info, we can email it out.
Okay.
Thank you, Josh. Okay, next, the update on the weather cam, we are still waiting on a site visit, so I would like to table that till next month, if y'all don't mind. Okay, new business, splash top policy, this is for, um, like when we had our budget meeting, that Kerry can remote into her computer, it's already proven to be very helpful. I'll just need approval for the policy.
I'll make a motion, we approve the policy.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
This is if someone's not at the meeting, they wanna remote in, or we're talking about when you're at a meeting and you're remoting into your system.
This is only, this is only for Kerry to remote from her laptop into her system.
Into her system, that she can get.
Yeah, like if we had a snow day.
Yeah.
Or at the budget meetings.
Right.
She can remote in, that way, like even tonight, if, if we needed her to look something up, she could.
Gotcha, okay.
Is this called to specify, just, just Kerry, just something like, I mean...
Well, she's the only one with this right now, so, mm-mm. Any more discussion? Ms. Vicki?
Andy Baker.
Yes.
Andy Ecklin.
Yes.
Chris Foster.
Yes.
Pete Harris.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
J.K.
Hodges.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next up, we have Kyle Breckenridge here from Salt, and he's gonna give us an update on our stormwater project. Everybody should have a handout.
First, I just wanna introduce myself, I, I know I've met most of you, there may be a few I haven't, um, some Kyle Breckenridge, I've been here with Nick a few times, but it's been probably a year over, uh, and I guess out of the, right off the gate, Nick has been the primary contact, project manager for everything Heber, obviously, since he lived in Heber. He left Salt full-time la-, end of last year, so this has kinda been a transition year, he's been doing some part-time work, but we're kind of trying to fully transition by the end of the year, so here on out, I'll be the primary contact. I've been the designer along with our E.I., Riley Cornett, uh, so we've been involved on the engineering side from the get-go, but Nick has been kinda serving as P.M. on everything Heber, so just feel free to reach out to me at any time, um, if, you know, anytime call, I'll have the card there. So, any questions on that first, or on my background, or anything of that sort?
Okay.
Okay? I think, I believe Nick shared a Dropbox link with, or maybe emailed, I think some of you maybe got, I don't know if that would go through an email, so I think it was a Dropbox link.
I think Andy emailed it to me.
Okay, yeah, but, uh, so we submitted this, I guess I'll start off, you know, surprisingly, I'm sure you're all surprised, the federal government does everything backwards, surprise, surprise, but, so, we have to submit, so all, all the planning documents came through White River Planning and Development, so they're like the grant writer, so they submitted this, it was awarded, everything goes through White River, um, we, so that was all settled, it was awarded, I think seven and a half million dollars, that was awarded based on just the concept design and just some, okay, here's the problem, here's the proposed solution, part of what FEMA requires is exactly that document, it's hydraulic and hydraulic analysis, hydrology and hydra-, hydraulic analysis, so that basically then codifies what exactly needs to be improved and what structures, the sizing of the structures, uh, and there's obviously gonna be tweaks in that based on that report. Ideally, you should take the, I mean, use the, uh, the planning document to come up with a budget, which we did, and then allow some leeway as far as yet prices and quantities, because obviously that's the whole point of the study, but all the feedback we've gotten from FEMA is like, oh, you can't change these line items, it's different from the initial planning document. So, I think we've addressed all of that with FEMA, that was the latest communication with them, we had to kinda tweak the current estimate to match kind of the, uh, the previous concept, which, you know, before we did any engineering on it, but I think they've bought off on that, all that, I mean, the, you know, the total budget's the same, so that's not a problem. The, um, the problem is we need their approval on that document before we can move forward. I have yet to get an answer from them as to whether or not we need to submit, you know, full detailed plans, and they have to approve that as well. Kerry seems to think that this will be sufficient, and once they approve this, then we can go ahead and move the bid. We are 90% on the plans, pretty much everything's done, depending on FEMA feedback, we may have to tweak a few things, I mean, I would think, and we'll have to submit to the highway department, now, the highway department is partnering, cause part of these improvements are in their right-of-way, uh, so you're gonna be improving their drainage system, and I, they've agreed to 500,000, I don't think that's, you've officially received the minutes, I think they passed it, and you're waiting on the official minutes, is that right?
Um, I've already signed some documents, I'm waiting on the plans for payment, and I think that we are gonna have to submit that to them, and I'm still waiting on some details.
Okay, I, eventually, I think it's all on the, it's all cleared, you're cleared with 500,000, so we'll have to submit the, the plans and specs to R.D.O., get their approval before we can bid, so, I mean, I think it's still on line to have it bid so we can start construction in the good dry weather period, you know, June, July next year, which is ideal, that's what we'd want anyway, so as long as we can bid it by, you know, May, say, really April, that timeframe, we're in good shape, we're not really, if it pushes, then we, it's not ideal, but we just have to deal with it. Um, the feedback we got, one, one holdup on that is that the FEMA feedback was also about work in the floodplain, so originally in the, uh, the original estimate, we had clearing debris on Sulphur Creek, um, they're, they're throwing up a big red flag on that, saying that, you know, you can't do work in the floodway, worried about impacts on flooding, that we were gonna have to do a HECCRAZ, which is like a floodway model, and, you know, you can't talk common sense to them, I explained to them that, so basically, what they're saying is, if you have a five-gallon bucket and you're dropping water in at a set rate, which is the 100-year flood, which is documented, we know what it is, it's what we modeled, and it overflows at a set rate, they're saying that you can't, you can't, that you're gonna have to model it in order to tell me that if you add a little bit of volume to that bucket, the overflow won't be more, which makes no sense, everybody, a third grader could tell you, the overflow won't increase by adding volume to the bucket, but FEMA is not smart enough to figure that out, so they were saying we were gonna have to download the HECCRAZ model, which is their model, that's how they base the flood elevations, so anything that's mapped in your city, it's based on a FEMA model, we would have to download the model, we'd have to prove the model matches the existing, uh, flood maps, then we would have to revise the model, including our dredging, which, how do you even do that? Um, and then rerun it and say, okay, here's the, here's the output. So, to avoid all that, I said, well, let's just, what if we don't do any work in the floodway? They said, okay, that's fine, so now the big question is, the floodway starts basically just south of, is it Cersei, that's the furthest south street, equipment Cersei, is that right? I think Cersei, so just south of Cersei is the old fairgrounds, we're gonna have to outline the Third Street drainage there, if we can't do, if they're gonna, if they're saying we can't do any work in the floodway whatsoever without doing a HECCRAZ model, then we're either gonna have to do this elaborate modeling effort, or we're gonna just have to turn down Cersei and outlet Third Street and Fifth Street at the same place, which may be possible, um, or there are some other things we could do to make it work, but, so that's the big question we're waiting on from FEMA, we're just waiting on the answer, um, and we're waiting on approval of this document. That document, I think, I forgot how many pages, I think you said 400, I know it's quite a few, it has all the modeling results in it, I just printed out the executive summary to kinda give you the highlights, and then also it has the, um, exhibits in it, which are maps of the five drainage basins, the primary flood problems, there are others, I know in the city, but these are the five primary ones that were identified to try to address with the money available. Um, the, the big ones are obviously Third Street and downtown, so that will be addressed along with Fifth Street, so it's just west of that, and then moving north, um, Lohawk area, and most of that's R.D.O. right-of-way, other than what turns west into that ditch, and then north of that is, uh, Trailwood, and that's, we call it Trail, it's actually what goes west of Trailwood, so right along Trailwood, at the intersection of Trailwood, and the highway, and then moving west, and then finally Copperfield Circle, which is pretty, pretty minor improvements. So, are there, I'm happy to address any questions on any of that or the process, but basically at this point, we're still waiting on FEMA to approve that, to answer our questions about, uh, work in the floodway and what that's gonna require, um, as far as out, you know, outlet of the culvert into the floodway, um, and we'll go from there and button the plans up, uh, submit everything to R.D.O. and FEMA if, if required, get their approval, and then we're ready to, to bid. You should get some, some interest, it's a very, you know, it's a large stormwater project, so, I know you'll get some...
On Third Street, can't go down the young business?
Well, if we can't, if they're saying you can't do any work in the floodway without a HECCRAZ model, uh, we would either have to, cause, I mean, what we'd be doing is cutting a ditch, cause the flow line of that, it's a six, uh, I think it's a six by four coming down Third Street, and it's gonna be a relief culvert for what the current drainage path, you're gonna have basically two drainage paths from Main, and one is gonna go straight down Third to Sulphur Creek. Right now, there, there's a small ditch there, but the flow line of our culvert will be below that, so we would have to excavate, so remove soil, so we'd be actually expanding the volume, minuscule, but it'd be expanding the volume of the floodway, but again, they're saying you can't do any work in the floodway, you have to prove you don't increase the flood elevation. Again, we're removing, not adding fill, they're saying we're gonna have to prove that we don't impact the flood elevation, so we'd have to do this elaborate modeling, or reroute it where it, we can end it at an existing flow, flow, flow channel that, that doesn't need any improvement.
So when you, when you're talking about, so turning on Cersei?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to just shoot some points to see if that's gonna work.
I mean, in between Cersei and following, whatever that is, there is already ditch there, you can't just clean that out.
I don't, yeah, I mean, again, the problem is, on the south side, it would be in the map floodway, basically, the house map is everything south of Cersei is in the floodway, so if we came down Cersei with the box, turned the box, and then outlet the box, tie it into the Third Street drainage, and let that, or Fifth Street drainage, let them outlet together, if the, if it'll work, and we haven't looked at it yet, because we're hoping that that's not an ideal solution, um, but we'll have to look at our alternatives depending on FEMA feedback. Um, I'm hoping that we can, you know, convince them that, why don't we have to do all this effort just to remove a little bit of volume out of your floodway, which is gonna have no material impact, if it did, it would drop the flood elevation, cause you're increasing the storage volume in the floodway, right? But, we'll see what they say.
Walnut.
Walnut, that's right, Cersei's north, Nor-, Cersei's north equipment, it's walnut that's south.
Well, I, I just know that there's, it runs down Third, and then behind, where my shop is, there's actually ditch areas there.
Yeah, there's an outlet now, there's a couple culverts, small culverts that outlet on the south side, the problem is, all those flow lines are above our new culvert coming in, and so there, we'd have to do improvements on that ditch, now, it, it's not a lot, it's only about 200 or 300 feet, and you get to where the ditch is good, it'll carry it, and we're fine, we'll, we were planning trapezoidal ditch improvements to tie into our box, the outlet of our culvert, which we have to get approved by FEMA. So that's been the real hangup, is the concerns about work in the floodway, so we did remove the debris removal, which, we're probably not gonna have the money to do that anyway, um, if, if the, perhaps the bids come in lower than expected, you get really good bids, we could maybe change order some of that back in, but I don't think FEMA's gonna allow it, they were, the environmental, they were worried about changing scour velocities on the ditch and, um, you know, if you remove the debris, so, uh, there's a lot of concerns they, you know, they don't, basically, they don't want any change to the ditch without you doing some elaborate modeling scheme to prove you're not gonna affect the ditch, the erosion.
They're afraid if you speed it up in Sulphur Creek, then you're, um, what are they afraid, we're flooding a little red then?
Yeah, you, I mean, you could potentially, you know, of course, that, we're talking about removing debris, that's the thing, like, we're removing debris, so we're returning original condition, if it didn't scour before, it wouldn't scour now, or, you know, now, nothing's really changed, they're saying, no, you, you've gotta prove that any debris removal you do, which means we would have to go out and actually completely topo the whole debris field, all along the creek, rather than just doing what we expected, is have the contractor go in, long-reach excavator, and just as needed.
Right.
Clean up the, clean up, you know, just remove loose debris, but otherwise, we would have to topo all that and try to come up with a HECCRAZ design of, here's the debris we're gonna remove, here's pre-conditions, here's post-conditions, it gets ridiculous, as you can see, but, so, uh, we'll, we'll see what FEMA says and get back to you as soon as we hear. Uh, Kerry did ask for an update, she's the primary contact with FEMA, I have spoken directly to Matthew Pippenberg out of the D.C. office about some of the technical issues, but Kerry's the primary contact, we asked her to get an update, she requested one, and they, they haven't responded, I checked right before the meeting to see if they had, and...
Wasn't that the beginning of the week she asked?
Yeah, it was Monday.
Yeah.
So, any, uh, any other questions? Happy to answer.
Phil, thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Goodness, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Have a great night. Okay, the next item is just an FYI for the ordinance for the voting by Ward, it's already been turned in, um, to the county clerk and taken care of. Open mic. Announcements, Happy Thanksgiving, it's coming up next week, I'm super excited, I'm ready to eat all the things. Um, on December 6th, it's gonna be a huge day here in town, we've got Jingle Bell Shop, we've got the Christmas parade at 6, but before that, Eden Song is gonna perform, and then after Eden, after the Christmas parade, Retroactive and Friends are gonna be here at the courthouse to perform, um, at the same time, the kids get to visit Santa, and they have a Charles Dickens-themed band, and they want people to dress up in, uh, theme attire, and there will be prizes for the best dressed.
Is there a parade, or is it...
Yeah, the parade's at 6.
What's the theme?
Uh, caroling, comma, caroling, I think, yeah, caroling, lots of singing.
Awesome. With a 7-foot long accordion player?
Yeah, I mean, I'm excited about that accordion player, and there's also a golf tournament that day out at Riverlands to benefit Cleveland County Cares, and I think there's something else, but I can't remember right now. Yes, Thunderbird, no, I said Riverland, they're having one, so Thunderbird's having one too, right?
Yeah, Toys for Tots, right?
Yes, yes. Okay, y'all have anything else? Thank you. Uh, Chief, you need any help with that? All right. Oh, it's fun, I've gotten to go before.
It's fun to watch, I've been in, I've been in Walmart, accidentally, watching it happen. It's fun.
Big time. Okay, if there's anything else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion? Second.
Thank you.